Yeah. I think the question you're right to. Initially, we should start by election of offices for the budget. We need to, we need to elect a chairman, vice chair, and secretary. We try to keep things. These meetings, or usually it's either I or the chairman. I'm going to wait for Michelle.
She's calling.
She is. Okay, we can wait for her, and then we guys can elect a chairman. Vice chair. And the secretary.
No political signs out there.
No one ever used politics.
No, none of that stuff.
We elected your chairman.
Yeah, there was no objection.
Oh, I was just saying. I was just saying that we have to go through that process. So what I'll do is I'll take nominations for, and this only has to do with the budget. So I cannot be responding to these questions. So right now, I'll take nominations for chairman of the budget board.
I nominate Michelle.
I second all that.
For chairman. Hearing none, all those in favor of electing Michelle chairman of the budget board. Next is vice chair.
I'm O'Neal.
You over vice chair? Okay. The other nomination for vice chair. That always, you know, the question. And great, and the secretary. Nominations for secretary.
I don't want to be, I don't want to be taking notes. I've done it for years enough. Okay. Don't show up, okay, because I've done it too many years that I don't want to do it ever.
All right, any nominations? I'm hearing all those who've been with us, some old members of the secretary. As I was saying, you know, we did some use these based on the questions that were asked me. And asked for spreadsheet, doing the fast salaries, a lot of that. And then we're up against you. And I have to thank. So I, I knew that would be the. Now, I should find huge mistake that I made and still waiting so. In two, the old, let's clean seven thousand dollars. Thanks for that catch, didn't catch it first. Definitely, I had not only calculated, I had to consider full time salaries. And I also calculated the contract plan and six combined, I should have been six. So I made those adjustments. Last week, we'll get into Terry's budget shortly, is our last, last time we met. We also spoke about. One of the seven thousand dollars that was initially in this town before. And it was for the, a new repeater for public works. And long story short, just to let you know, repeaters been there about fifteen, twenty years maybe. And we were contacted by the FCC. The, I guess, way these frequencies work. Often, New Hampshire is on the same frequency as us. So what was happening is they thought we were overrunning them. But in fact, it was their own equipment. But what it did is the FCC spurred us to inspect our, our repeater and our antenna. And our, our folks had indicated to us that it's time to replace it for fail lines. That's why the seven thousand dollars. And then the rest of it, I guess we can take up as. Why don't we start with the. With the public works budget. The fifty on one series. Terry's hand, and answering your questions, but also did, also ask a question. Capital budgets, I do have some recommendations that like to share with you. Capital budgets, choose. Any questions for Terry on his operating budget? Now, let's see. About eight point two percent here. From the previous year, primarily, I think you could find, we do have several positions that are open right now. Where we. We'll be budgeting them, we also budgeted family coverage, I believe. Fill that, so, and that's a little bit more money to get.
Yeah, they're up quite a bit, whereas you're presented.
Yep.
But that's increasing the amount of coverage that the employees have, or?
Well, eventually, we'd like to have, we'd like to make a recommendation. What we did is that we budgeted them that have family coverage as opposed to single that we've done in the past.
Oh, oh, single to family.
We haven't got to fill it yet.
Okay.
We budgeted there to be in ten.
Yeah, okay.
But we haven't even posted the spots yet.
Okay.
For Terry, we got. Missing people, but the uniform budget double, how's that?
Well, that's, I've got an explanation. What happened was, no matter what, how it happened. I think I have about to go around. Basically, my add was. What we're also. So if you take that hundred and fifty dollars. Be, times a fifty-two. It's over twelve, seventy-eight hundred dollars. So we're already short because of the budget sixty dollars. So then if you add. Three extra forty-eight cents, and make it seven. You know, in hopes that we do get four girl, it's going to bring up twelve thousand. And that's, and I averaged that at thirty dollars per year, and that's why I gave you the cent as well. Because you can see that. The prices on each employee varies. Yeah, so I averaged it at thirty, and I said, you know what, we, you know, it's going to be right around that twelve thousand five hundred. So that's why you put it twelve seven.
Have you ever gotten another estimate from?
We have, and they weren't, weren't any better. I mean, we haven't sent, but we're in a five-year contract. So in that. Right now, it expires, uh, March sixteenth to twenty-seven.
When they come over, they pick everything up.
Yeah, they, you know, we get. Eleven cents. It's t-shirts. Shirts. Jackets. That's basically, that's it, not shouting. Chances that we have probably give insurance. Overall, it's costing. But to us.
Where does the main purse piece come into it?
It's not in there, right? It's still a separate. Separate discussion that we need to have. Have, but then we want to follow the early on through process. Thoughts, that's the main purse, the cost of the paper. It's not in the budget. If you, and I would suggest that if you do decide you made purse here, it would be a stain well born, all right? Certainly because of the complexity of the main purse. The regulations they want to have to the warrant. So, uh, because of owners, so. Pretty extensive.
When we have that discussion, and we get like a rough idea on how many people we think would.
It should be in there.
Yeah.
Then the number that I need. For the main purse at thirty-two thousand six is taking in not only our employees outside the fire. Profession, but also the fire.
We have that discussion on Saturday. Yeah, it's like, can we make that? I feel like I need a lot of information.
Yeah, agreed.
I'm more or less just running control data.
Yeah, I don't believe.
I asked one question, so I want you to come back another night.
Did we, excuse me, Keith, in the past, did we have it so that we had, like, the budget and then the expenditures for that? Like, did we ever count those?
Yes, we did, and I don't have it here. I think the last expenditure piece, yeah.
Was in here, yeah.
It gives you a total, but I haven't been being individual, but I provide that to you to have it.
Well, yeah, that's current expenses, but like a year before, as far as end of the year. I thought we used to have that once in a while, no? Maybe I'm wrong. Seems like we had, like, you know, the, the amount we budgeted and then what we actually expended, and then the next year adjusted.
I can, I can certainly buy this, that's not very.
Maybe it's, maybe I'm picking the town report book or something, but.
I don't, I don't recall them like back, rather than from a year, but.
Well, we can actually put you to that.
I'm just, you know, like, wondering as far as, like. How close we're budgeting, and, you know, even if we just did one year back and stuff, just how close are we been, have we been budgeting? Or, you know, we, I know, like, snow removal, that's hard to do with, you know, solve the sand and all that stuff.
Well, usually they have, like, like, don't usually have like. This breakout of like the budgets, like, what our actual looks. And this is not showing that, so. Yeah, so, okay, well, not now, but like, that means when twenty-third we have that, or when twenty-eighth we have that. Like, that might be helpful.
Right, even one year back, it's these expenses to hear.
So that we know what's, like, true, or increasing it, or decreasing it.
Yeah, with the trend is.
But I hope that we somehow decrease somewhere.
I think, I think. Financials at the end of. This past, we said, we had, at the end of this quarter, we had two hundred eighty-four thousand, that's remaining. Total. So I think we, I can get you the.
Okay.
Action detail. And then to revenue, we are up. So again, that just could be. I think a lot of that's intruded into the fact that we have the staff.
Yeah.
Anything else on the operating budget? I mean, there is another couple that, you know, we've got to look at. Workplace safety. That takes care of all our drug testing, because, you know, we get random drug tests. Also. We got to get back to some of the tests, get a hair and conservation program. That we go to work well and have that hair checked. So that's going to be part of that, we have kind of lapsed on that. We haven't done that quite a lot, so I talked to Wendy, so. That's another reason why we have that fifteen hundred, sixteen thousand. And like, some uniforms, uh, vehicle maintenance. I mean, things are getting a little older. We just had a problem with our excavator over. Uh, this past summer, and we spent nineteen thousand dollars. Just one, you know, trying to get it back. That's just one piece of. So I said, we probably should up that, you know, two or three grand, just to cover up on this. Because I got a payment right now, and it's going to be in the present.
And do we have my canic on site for that, or do we sell it out?
Everything now is off. So we have to have chat with Bay Ross and Man. And. But general maintenance, oil changes, exhaust. That's basically it.
And the salaries are really a full, that you have here is a, is a full-blown.
Fully staffed.
Oh, fully staffed.
Yeah.
Yeah, fully staffed.
Yeah, and how short did you say we are? You said it, but I didn't.
Three, three positions.
Three positions short.
So it's not counting, you. Not counting the working form. Well. Yeah.
Keep this number that we're carrying for the supervisor. Like, the one position you feel like will wait for that number properties.
So if we wind up filling those three positions, I mean, part-time positions to those.
Part-time change.
Do you change?
Yeah, generally, that part-time is, is there.
Snow plowing, yes. Right, but I didn't know, like, if you, if you have a full staff, do you still need to hire the, the part-timers for plowing?
Yes.
You do?
Yeah.
You still hire part-time in the summers?
Fly girls. If we get them. And then it comes out of that. Line. Had that discussion as well. He had, he was asleep the other night because he told me that he doesn't think that all part-time plow folks that we have will be with us next year, so. We're looking at replacing all of them as well. So. And loyalty to, to individuals, like, his, plus the family members, it does get very, very nice to.
Sweeten the pot to keep.
Why I heard about money.
What's that?
You mind talking about money?
Yeah. Um, we can talk a little bit about Terry's road, what we have right now. In the budget, you know, we have a spreadsheet on it. We have six hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we placed in the road budget for road paving. Right now, fifty thousand that these were, um. Intersections, river stone, you know, are still waiting for the best rates to come in. Or is it late, never seen. Awesome, that intersection, that's what we have right in six kids, which is eighty thousand.
Now, does that include the money that we voted on at that special town meeting to? Was it, wasn't a grant money, but it was the COVID money?
That was engineering money.
Oh, that was engineering?
Yeah, and we said, yeah.
Okay. Okay. I remember we had voted on something for COVID money.
Yeah, we had to wrap up our final, our thoughts for the end of the fiscal year. What we have returned, if we have dedicated now for.
Okay, so that's.
Now we're into reporting. Public year ones.
Okay. But that's not part of the six hundred and fifty?
No, it's not. So hopefully, these are the roads that we got free. We do have one road that did get done last summer. We're going to do this sprint, which is middle front. So we've got it down off the river. But like I said, hopefully, money-wise and the paving. Prices don't commit, you know, right out of the road, we can get everything off this done. We did take new road out of the equation last year because of. Clearview and Bakerwood, they were, that was really bad. So kind of kicked that out. I'd like, if you do new road also this year. I mean, there is a couple of boats in the area. You know, if it didn't get down, it wouldn't be, you know. For it to happen, yeah. But this is, in fact, we have a ten-year road plan, I can't even hear this is. This is the money. So you've got one more year's of time that will have to be up. redo it, like. I, I know about you folks, but I'm pretty proud of the road system that we have. In a rental, if you look around, we don't have any portals. And I think it's a testament to the fact that we have a rotation program. We stay on top of them, we, we extensive thing. And one of the things that we don't do is renew our winter weight restrictions. And then time, time. Also, my neighbors are arguing that that typically paid price. By taking it down too early, so maybe it needs for contractors, but we try to do the best we can.
The extra one sixty is left, is left over from last year, that's just coming back this year. You said the six fifty, Ricky?
Six fifty, yeah, there's some money in the budget now, it's about, about two hundred. I think it was two eighty-six, it was somewhere around there, two eighty-six that was remaining, that was to be used last year. And so as Terry said, we went into that metal, is it metal road?
Metal road.
Metal road first. Out of the money that we have now, so we'll do it for the end of this fiscal year. And then, depending on what we have left, we will combine it through projects that we have. Because as you know, whenever it goes to the calendar, it doesn't last, it still stays here for some. We've got to build projects.
So where's the extra one sixty coming from?
Yeah. What do you want?
Well, you said you had a hundred and six, six hundred and fifty K road budget, and this is only four ninety-five hundred.
Oh, we sold the five hundred there?
Yeah.
Well, and you said, you know, we'll take it as much as we can. Yeah, we have six hundred, I, yeah, I didn't look at the number that he had there at five hundred, but. You remember, we started looking aside, aside additional money a couple of years back, even though we weren't spending it. In the event that, you know, something came up, we had that here, so.
So you're going to leave that six fifty in?
Yes, and it'd be my recommendation to leave the weekends.
So a town meeting, you could say. We're carrying six fifty, but there's money from last year going into general fund.
No, no, we're going to be asking for six fifty. We have a certain amount of roads, we've got whatever, how many roads he has, even that totals almost, almost five hundred thousand. We've got some roads that we're, if we have some money, the additional money, we're going to go into year ten. Of the project, and try to get as much roads that we can to get done. Generally, what happens, we run out of time. At the end of the year, it's too cold, we can't get that stuff done, so. We can spend it, we, we will, if you guys get it to us, we'll try to spend it. I mean, the other thing that's been had also is the river stone, one group. So I mean, that could help with that also.
But we voted separately on that, I mean, it was not a separate one. That's all that was, was engineering.
Originally Roger said that he was going to do it himself.
Right.
He had.
He thought it was like one fifty or something.
A lot cheaper.
I don't have, don't have the hell with it. I'd love to do it, it's just that we don't have.
Yeah.
What did we do last year, capital reserve on the road, was it? Six fifty, was six hundred? I'm just looking at it as if, if, you know, worse gets to worse, that would be something that.
Well, I got a plan from capital reserve issue.
Yeah, I see, so.
Yeah, I'd like to, I, you know, a good time is going to affect public, public works, going to affect fire. I would like to take the capital reserve funding that we're asking, with exception of the road work. Out of the municipal operating budget, and put it into, in, in. It's funded through our under designated fund balance. So right now, we have about five point two million under designated fund balance that we have. Said, we have to keep twenty percent. So I would like to maybe spend up to a million dollars for capital reserve funding. Would like to put thirty thousand dollars aside for computers, equipment here at the office. I'd like to put thirty thousand dollars into the transfer station budget, or capital reserve transfer station. Talk about, you know, new cans and any maintenance, if you do. I'd like to pay three hundred thousand dollars for. Public works, if I put them into those budgets, or into capital reserve for those projects. I know that he, right now, the only thing that we have that we'll be purchasing next year for. For public works, we'd be, our people to purchase a new, they got car. For the department. The rest of it would be set aside for equipment and or, the other thing we're talking about is building. Got to stop looking at options of, of maybe a million dollar additions to existing. So we do have the funds, I believe, to, to take on these challenges.
What would that leave us, Keith, to use to offset the tax break?
You're still going to have over a million dollars to get that, so it would be my thought of taking, you know, maybe five hundred thousand of that. Set it aside, do not know where our. Our overall town balance. We, I firmly believe that we're getting over that eight hundred. Fifty to eight hundred and seven thousand dollars. Are for overall municipal balance. Which will, I think, depending on what happens at the school, and what happens at the county. I've got the schools budget right now, I've got the county's budget, came in at forty-five thousand dollars more than last year. So I have that budget. And I do the math, and use a new value of somewhere around the twelve fifty mark. Or the tax rate, so you know it's probably somewhere I think. Now, that's without using, I think, the five hundred thousand, so if you put the five up here, you may be able to size that a bit more.
Does the. Does the. The value that you think they're gonna come in, you think that's gonna affect us a lot more next year than this year?
Um, not sure, um, again. It will have that down, so it will help us set the tax rate for August.
Yeah.
It will affect this budget that you presented.
Right. Will that, will that affect anything that we get from the state?
In terms of revenue sharing?
Yeah.
Uh, revenue sharing has already been set and then.
For this year?
Yeah.
Right.
For next year, I already know what our revenue sharing is gonna be. Already got it on the uh revenue sharing sheet.
Yeah.
Still over five hundred thousand, five thirty maybe.
But that's, that's based on our, that's based on our valuation, right?
No, revenue share. Revenue sharing is based on. Whatever income the the towns, the towns or municipalities are taking in most of the state. Then it's duty up, so we're not, you know, we're not like a better third or a south Portland, but they're gathering those funds. Sales tax funds, those go to the state, then they have a formula where they distribute it to every town in the state. So obviously, those towns get more because they're. This is a phrase, those public towns that have those. Those services, so that's.
So the, so the the valuation really won't have any effect. Will that, will that affect anything with?
Well, yeah, they've, they've used, uh, the counties are giving us.
Right, for this year, but it will affect.
Um, the only way it affects it is that the county takes the state valuations. And then does a percentage. Of of once they put their budget together, what that percentage is ours is one point four one percent. Of their twenty-eight million dollar budget is paid by us. So that each of the twenty-nine communities, your account will get a percentage. Like I think you markets, they paid them three million dollars for county services. We're gonna get three, three or five.
Do you know what, do you know what the RSU percentage is right now, as far as, I know they're not finalized on that budget. Seven percent?
Yeah, we got it, it's uh right around seven percent.
Well, will our evaluation have any effect on that budget? Maybe not this year, but next year?
Well, I'm thinking, well, depends on what happens with the rest of the communities, then. It's set on value.
Right.
Set on all town value.
Right, so that's.
Ours is always the lowest. So. Yeah, they're at, what, six, six right now, six millions?
Yeah, six, 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 and almost, almost six, seven.
Actually, the final number for us was five percent, right? Is that what it was last year? Think it was five, I think it was five percent this year, it's something like.
Yeah, well, I've got them at seven point seven percent, four hundred and seventy-two thousand, six sixty. Now, last year, we be allocated six million, one seventy-six, one thirty-one. Right now, we're going, it's six million, six forty-eight, seven ninety. The county budget went from three oh three, two oh five to three forty-five, nine twelve four. So those are the, those are the numbers, so they're up fourteen percent. You lost at this point. Um, they're going through their budget process, now they may ask. So decisions to make.
Yeah, the reason I'm asking is, you know, you wanna use the. You know, the fund to maybe offset some of this, but I wanna make sure that we don't put ourselves in a predicament next year where we're stuck because of this evaluation. Now, all of a sudden, we're getting, you know, we have to pay more for the school because our evaluation has gone up. I'm gonna make sure that we, at least we have funds available to offset that if we can. We cannot, but.
Well, we're gonna do that, and all our, you know, the only control we have is over the fiscal funding, so. We can use the fund balance to offset off, we can um. We can activate our uh this big revenue, we can like the offset taxes. Um, we do that every year.
Yeah.
Um, and try to get is, try to be conservative, I don't like being too um aggressive on that. Well, shout out to the revenue fees, but. This year, I think I will. It'll be, uh, it'll be three billion, forty-one thousand, ninety-nine dollars in revenue that I'm anticipating. And so, yeah, to to answer your question, you know, yeah, we're always gonna be. Below end, we're not gonna be, I think, thirty-three billion, any month. And fourteen million dollars, any month forward. And then us at low six million.
We're at, we're at the low end now, but there is a push to relook at that formula.
Really?
Yes.
Was there a designated or the RSU?
Yes, we have three like.
But there is a push to to re-investigate that formula.
In what way?
Um, because uh there are many that think that ten above four is, although ten above four is tax real high. Uh, there are many that think that it's proportionate.
Mill rates low.
Mill rates low, right, but.
They're taxed very low on school.
Right.
Cause they don't know a lot of.
Yeah, the formula is basically around town down in.
It certainly has been discussion.
The last thing Johnson, because. No, uh, look at the three communities, probably most desirable, we don't stand there. So, yeah, so uh in in the capital reserve for uh public works, we paid off all of our. Outstanding uh leases, ones we had on equipment. We had a loader, we had uh road size mower, we had a van, a log can. Those are all been paid off now. That three hundred thousand right here. That's what we set aside for future. And we can look at.
So this, you're not gonna set aside a specific amount for each department like we do every year? Or capital reserve, and I didn't do it anymore.
Oh, no, I do want.
You still wanna do that just?
But you want to take it out of the.
Just take it out of.
Fund balance.
You can't, you can't do that every year because you don't know what the fund balance is like.
No, we have a, we have fund balance of five point two billion now. I'm, I wanna use a billion of that fund balance this year. We can revisit it next year.
But we're still taking that of fund balance?
Yes, I would take it out of fund balance this year.
But going forward, what, you don't know?
That would be a discussion. Next year. Be my, my thought. If we do that issue, we'll be taking. About quarter days, we can out. Out of the budget now. And so that would even lower our, our competitive tax collection. As a result, and just wanted to take advantage if it's there. But something you guys.
And I think, you know, kind of a rough estimate last year, last summer, from what we built. And he said he couldn't give me a definite price because he set himself in trouble many times. Municipality price, it's not going under this. So he said roughly, what we was looking at, he just looked at probably two hundred and fifty thousand. What a fifty by fifty condition on yet.
Towards the town, towards.
Yeah, did that happen a lot.
That would give us a good advice to see my uh perhaps you should take care of that.
What's the twenty percent that we have, is that based on the six million or is it less anticipated revenue?
Twenty percent is based on, uh, after the audits, and now there's a fund balance that remains as not designated to any of them.
Eighty twenty percent of that?
We gotta keep twenty percent of that, that's our policy.
That equates to?
Two point, about two point two, two point five. Depending on what happens with schools and the final budgets. But I'm concerned that we need to be a true five. That will be that policy decision. And that gives us the favor that balance that we'll get. Um, at least this year. Not saying we would ever be, but at least this year.
I was getting a little concerned about that.
Yeah, cause you never know if that fund balance is gonna be there.
Yeah, cause that's basically like a six month, at least minimum six month operating supply or something like that.
Yeah, it's two or three months worth of uh.
Yeah.
Public cap.
Capital, yeah.
You know, you know, collecting any excess tax or any fees or any taxes now.
I wanna touch base a little bit with what Jason was talking about earlier about the road projects, I think. You know, we're gonna show the public that we're gonna spend four hundred and ninety-one thousand, but we're gonna ask for. Um, six hundred and fifty K, I think we need to have some sort of explanation there why we're doing that.
Well, we certainly provide that to, just to grab any uh. Grabbing, you know, products that we have for next year.
Right.
Place a lot of it.
Yeah, and and if something happens and he can't do those, well, then it. Undesignated fund and.
And that's what we're down at the back, we we've come out to the fact that we didn't have, so we had to. Put uh some projects in the mains to the following years, we didn't have nights.
In the back, we put that, right, and then, you know, we just do it for more. You know, do it next year. And again, yeah, kind of. At embarrassing date, I mean, they are so busy, and again, they are short handed also. And like. One of the older, well, not the older, but uh Jason Robinson, the the woman, he said it were, you know, on the paper.
Well, that's kind of what happened at the end of the year with the, with the shoulder grow.
Yeah, I ended up putting shoulders on.
Yeah.
Cause they could get.
Well, somebody was complaining about the cost, we had to go to and take care of it. It was a safety issue.
But does that mean that, where, I mean, we have to be committed to the six hundred and fifty, but I mean, if we have five hundred thousand there. I'm looking that overall with the school increase and everything else, should we? Maybe shoot for more like six hundred thousand rather than at the extra fifty at this point, this year.
Uh, certain of all, in the intersection, on the key of the six hour now, certainly for road.
From roads, okay.
That was why we did that. We didn't have the, we didn't have the intersection where it been through with the set.
And the other thing, we don't really know what's gonna happen to payment prices. You know, I mean, depending on how to do the economy. The the cost of fuel, I mean, it could skyrocket.
You know, prior years. We had like our, what we did for twenty twenty-four road projects, and then our current twenty twenty-five road projects, and then our upcoming like twenty twenty-six road projects.
Yes, the whole ten year plan.
Yeah, which would be beneficial to see so that we know what's upcoming as well, so like the extra money goes, um.
Like I say, I could have done that, I just took this out of ten year plan.
See, yeah, so I think it would be helpful to see, maybe not past projects, actually, yeah, that would be helpful too, like I would say twenty twenty-four versus twenty twenty-six. So you can see what's upcoming and what we've just done, so you know, like honestly, if I if I sit around and repeat something. Formed, yeah, do, but just so that we can see what that they have.
And I, I know that you're on your way out, but I, you know, I think we should look beyond twenty twenty-six. Just see if there's any major road projects coming up.
Well, certainly, I'll be ten year.
I started looking to kind of try to update it to the plan. And almost like now, it's just gonna take, almost the ball right back to beginning of that plan.
Yeah.
With the goals that we're done.
Yeah.
So, you know, like I said, I I kinda like to look at the roads, like you were saying also, to see if there's any that. Maybe could change around a little bit, break up the whole. Uh, like I said, as far as what we're doing this year, like block manic, if I had to pull that out, it's not. Not that help. And also, if you get some. Really, really.
Box problems been a while. We went around with that one a long time before. Been a while.
Anything else to tell me for them, so we'll leave you with the complete ten year plan. Uh, also, uh, sort of expense, strategy. This year. My thoughts on. On that all sorts of words. The capital values this year, and if a real show of. Public works being fired, which are two large.
Do we get, do we get in trouble if we have, you know, extra money and fund balance and that? There are a certain threshold where the state or somebody says, hey, you better, you better use that money or?
I don't think so.
The voters.
Well, we know that the, we know that the voters have said something before, right? Why use a fund balance to be reducing?
Right.
And which we do anyways, right? We use it, but.
Yeah, well, this year, they did not, because not only we used five thousand. They've already, we've already collected.
Right.
So we'll now spend it for things that can be used.
I, I guess my thinking this year is if we wanna implement the PERS, you know, and bring that forward. I think if we can show that the other part of the budget isn't gonna be skyrocketing along with adding more. I think that's kind of like my way of thinking is, where can we be a little more conservative? Yeah, so that, you know, uh.
Yeah, right now, I have another shape person, a potential boss, who always told me this about. There's a lot of folks that we know that possibly know play at the main purse, but to your folks. Once you root it.
Right.
Every year.
You can have a bunch.
Right.
So.
Right.
Yeah.
And the, the interesting things that you don't have control of administrative costs. That are assigned to us through main curves, it goes up and down.
And and then we're also talking about health insurance.
Right, I'm talking about it, uh.
For employees.
Five percent swap in culture.
Right.
Chances are, PERS. If PERS kicks in, you'll probably find your three positions will get filled, right? Probably, those three, there's three more PERS.
There could be possibly three, three there.
Yeah.
You know, it, it's an interesting game for folks because they're gonna be taking. And they're, we're gonna be figuring out what seven or eight percent of their own income. Uh, their check to pay for the main course.
But if you're in the system, if you're working for another municipality and you wanna move or or another. Right. State, you know, and you already are in the system.
Well, I think it's a great offer.
I appreciate.
Right, you're not gonna hear the song.
No.
I think it's a good option, gives, it gives our employees another.
Yeah.
Thing to look at.
Right.
Back.
And, you know, the, the point is, you know, when we've lost people to other, to other. Local.
Yeah, we have.
Because of that, but if they're already in the system, maybe we might be able to bring some of these people back.
Possibly.
You know, fill those positions both here and. You know, fill those positions both here and.
But I think it's all, the younger, the, the younger employees that are coming in, the less probably who really wants to buy in. Cause you have that option too, you can pay, but you can buy in by years back, so you can invest in it. But I'm sure that that's strategy that will, will be, we can use.
Thank you, stick around for another twenty minutes. Maybe just five.
So anything else to carry over tonight?
You wanna hit on transfer?
Oh, yeah.
Transfer station, okay.
Um, I gave you, um, some additional, uh, on transfer station. Um, the biggest issue that we're gonna have again, one of the, one of the things, things, taking fifty thousand out of the budget containers and getting here by thirty thousand in capital reserve to purchase some equipment, building. Um, the other thing that you have is, uh, scope of services for, uh, like you grew. The same domain is doing our quantity of landfill as well as these, um, upgrades to these waters filtration systems that are two homes. Uh, you should have got this in the next pack, probably this, that, that I received. Obviously, our, our actual monitoring of our landfill is going to be about six percent, so we we've got that, but the biggest issue for us right now is to replace the water systems that are in most two homes are obligated to continue to to monitor and to, uh, ensure that they get followed on water from that, then forever. Name it forever.
Can I get on that?
So, but those systems that are there now, been there like fifteen plus years and uh, they're causing us that it, it attacks the possibility, so they've given us a cost for that, which I built into the, uh, transfer station budget. You've probably seen the D E P landfill remediation, I have a budget to make things by a thousand or almost in that. Which covers our hazardous waste day, monitoring of the landfill as well as, uh, replacing, continuing servicing of those two, of those mobile systems, those water systems through those.
His services were up six percent, is that, was that part of the contract every year, it's gonna go up six percent?
Uh, I put six percent, they're just supposed to give me the number, they haven't given it to me yet, so I, I just built a in that.
Early, I do that.
I have to speed, let's see.
So I don't know if annual or if that's this year.
I think it's just, um.
And we get this one every year or is this because there are increases? I don't think it's.
There. Well, getting it more so not for as much of the monitoring and reporting of the landfill, but more so to the water treatment systems that we have to install.
Oh, that's, yeah, it's for shots, okay.
Systems, we'll see a, we'll see a, uh, draw from that next year, once those systems are installed, that'll be that, that something will become custom too.
I've gotta say, we had ours replaced a few years back when we built the house and not having to do the tank and everything, but just the R O and, uh, a couple pumps and things like that was over ten thousand dollars. Yeah.
You know, we could have a revenue year that we put fifteen thousand in our budget.
Right.
And we'll eventually put that in capital. You know, that was seriously allocated thirty thousand from our, that was fund balance to cover that, that we need that reserve.
Can you bring that next meeting, what your anticipation is on each, you know, pump works, fire, transfer?
Yeah. And.
You have to do that as a separate article for each account?
I think you can do it in one account, one article, what you have to, I think you have to.
You gotta do something.
You'd have to indicate in, in parts, it's sort of what we do when you anticipate the revenue.
Revenue, yeah, you state the revenue.
You state the total amount, and then you, you're telling where it's gonna go.
Yeah, but I think we've got to have it in the article somewhere that we've allocated fifteen here, so, yeah, okay.
I think so.
I would, yeah, that may be the best way to do it, I'm doing it all at once. Right now, we have all seven.
What do you think of Tom, like, like warrant thirty A, B, C, D or something like?
Yeah, I mean, in, in one article, say we're gonna, you know, but we wanna use the undesigned, the, and the amount of, and we're gonna dedicate it to these reserve accounts for and, and put the numbers.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
And right now, we have all seven.
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, they're keeping on lots of budget just for that.
Right, just like, um, yeah, like article thirty three over here, like we did, we do for in, for the revenue, we put a total, and then we put how much we're gonna raise by taxes, licenses, you know what I mean? That type of thing, and we put what those are gonna be. So that would be some, yeah.
Yeah. But just to mention to everybody here that our hazardous waste day for the specific is eight and twelve. And then twelve. Uh, you know, uh, all voice for us, so people wanna.
It'll be at our, at our transfer station.
Nine, nine, four, it's on top of our website.
Seems to work out better for us.
Yeah.
The folks can just drive up. You bring your asses to the open road and carry for stations.
I got a bunch of oil this year to give, seeing as Terry doesn't take any oil anymore.
Are we all set? Right now? Uh, yeah, we talked a little bit about the can, he's got some estimates on the can right now. As I said, I want, I want to put thirty thousand in there, but with the replacement of the can.
Well, basically, originally you'd put fifteen in thirteen, because, um, last year when we redid the comeback, like comeback or getting two opinions, um, the price on that can last year was twelve six. And believe it or not, had the price this year. It's gone down.
No way.
Badly. I thought for sure that it'd be up around fifteen, so I think that's what we did. But it's eleven two right now.
Buy it.
Buy two.
They said that they don't import price for ten days, because like he says, if you don't know what's gonna happen this year.
Yes, yeah.
This is what we should have kept reserve, if then we could have bought.
Right.
Yeah. So, like I said, I just wanted to bring this out, you know, so you guys know. You know, that's the price of the can this year, I didn't have a thought, really thought.
We're monitoring what we have in now, by the way, because Casal is, aren't reached out to Terry Hudson and, uh, and the, the can that we're presently using is almost not safe to go to road. And they wanna lease us one for a hundred and fifty dollars a month, so. We're not gonna do that quite yet. We're gonna, we're gonna see how it takes, they tell us about the policy.
Move into the carpool or something.
Or in the middle one, right?
Let it drop off.
Are we, uh, you know, when we bought the, one of those last year, we had talked about the three phase power and the converting, everything over, are we all set with that? There's still any issues there or moving forward or?
The fact, the way that they put that up, is we're done better than it has. So, I shouldn't say that. Cause something's gonna happen, but right now, it's, they got that, um, that breaker box up here, the A B switch on it, and they just keep turning that one compact together and running off that same converter. So it's worth it.
Even, even a crazy nut, like that, squirrel gets his diamond out. Sorry, but we used to have this. All right, hold on, thank you very much.
Thanks, Terry.
Send me Jason's number, wait.
Oh, I will.
Take the reuse signs off the freaking building.
Yeah.
You did? Excellent, I have.
The only one I'm picking off is the reuse ones quote. Because if you take that sign off, you know what's gonna happen.
People are gonna stop.
They got a thing that is open.
Yeah.
They, they want it.
As fire chief, and I, I think he likely provide a little bit of a presentation to efforts that you're plugging off. I would like to do as well. I hope up to a serious. How much can I do? No one?
Pretty nice, huh?
Thank you, sir. All right.
I'm again in the song.
You know, you have the.
Maybe they're saying this. Hey, sure.
Go to PC, it won't, it won't pick it up.
I used to do a cheap, I used to put a great little shield for like tiny hands.
It was such neat. So. Hold it, they go back. And it's a good thing, I told her.
I'll stand in front of me, can we, uh, can we do a coffee? Um, cheese fried, burnt off, I don't have to be right here. Oh, and can you send it to me? Sorry, I didn't have it on, I didn't see anything to do with it, sorry.
So I just did a little PowerPoint presentation here, um, just to give people an idea of what's hap, what's happening over the last year and the last few years, so our call volume, as you can see, has gone up. Um, a lot of that has stemmed from our mutual aid agreements with other municipalities. It's about thirty six percent is our mutual aid that we're going out, uh, there are Bitterford, Kenny Bog, Goodwin's Mills, we do receive some back, uh, but that ratio has gone from a one to one ratio in twenty two to now the three to one ratio, we're giving more mutually than we receive. And that has been extended, uh, even further. Give you an idea, we ended up in Scarborough the other night doing station coverage with an ambulance. We've gone as far as Wells, um, and that's a, uh, testament to us because we've increased our staffing, more and more people are relying on us. Um, so good, bad, and indifferent. So purchases over the last year, uh, we've purchased about twenty four hundred feet of hose, um, and some of that is secondary to the NFPA standard that says that we can't have any hose that was older than, um, nineteen eighty seven. Okay, um, some of it's gone to Public Works, and while I'm on the Public Works topic, since they've had a mechanic in-house that has saved us quite a bit of time and money downtime, Josh has been a great asset to us, um, and that's their mechanic, Josh Glant. So, uh, really happy, he's, he's working for the town. Uh, we bid, we, uh, purchased a, uh, fit test machine. This is a requirement by the labor's, um. Main Labor Board, uh, La- Bureau of Labor, excuse me. We have to do this annually. Previously, we had our own, um, that expired in like two thousand nineteen, I think was the last time we used it. Over the last couple of years, we've been using York County EMAs and their systems down. So we purchased our own, um, we've got a five-year warranty with it. It's gonna be annually certified, shipping's included with the warranty, um, so that's another purchase. Another recent purchase is, uh, this tick or thermal imaging camera went bad, uh, there was no repair for it, so we actually bought three smaller ones. And due to the age of that older one and the newer technology, we've been able to go with smaller ones. At actually a more affordable cost. So this bigger one, uh, back when it was purchased over five years ago was five thousand dollars. We paid thirty-six hundred dollars for three of the smaller ones. Same capacity, you can actually take pictures, video, and all that type of stuff. Um, but now the idea is, is that we'll have two of these on each one of our, uh, primary, uh, fire attack pieces. New gear, uh, we use some, uh, Aqua funds. I think we had, uh, twenty thousand dollars appropriated in Aqua, Aqua funds. To go towards new gear. There's a new standard from the NFPA coming out. Um, it's encompassing two standards, but the new standard is nineteen seventy. And with that being said, uh, gear can only have a lifespan of ten years old, and everybody's required to have two sets. There's two parts to that, two sets. Uh, one is the turnaround of gear. Um, the manif- from the time we order it to the time we get it, it's about four months. If we only have one set. That person's out of service because we have no backup anymore. We had so much gear that was fifteen. Years old, we got rid of all the backup stuff, uh, to meet the standard. Uh, we purchased a new ambulance, and I think that came out of TIF funds.
Right.
Came out of TIF funds. With the ambulance, we traded in our ol- um, older ambulance, we saved. Um, fifty thousand dollars we got for that old ambulance. It was a two thousand fourteen. The new ambulance came with what's it called, a striker power load, and, um, quite a little video clip that I put in here. So this is the retention system in the ambulance is a, uh, NFPA and triple K requirement. Okay, there's three options out on the market. This power load option has been, uh, proven to reduce back injuries. It's pretty much standard or the, the other manufacturer, uh, whi- which is known as Furno. It's one of those two. Um, it's pretty much standard on any ambulance you get now. That was, that stretcher and the power load system is about a seventy thousand dollar option that came with this ambulance. Um, so to reorder this ambulance today, we were able to pay, um. Essentially, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars for this ambulance to reorder it today is about four hundred thousand dollars. We ordered this ambulance in twenty-one, May of twenty-one, and we just got delivery right at the, uh, end of the fourth quarter of twenty-four, so it was. Forty-plus months. Um, for those ambulance coming around. So with, with the, uh, trade-in, we were able to upgrade our cardiac monitor. That was gonna be in the CI plan for this year. But with the savings with the trade-in, we were able to get this, uh, new, uh, it's called the Lifepack thirty-five. Newer technology, remove the old, um, Lifepack fifteen onto a, um, another piece. Of apparatus. So because we're doing so much mutual aid, and now we have. Us, um, the Lifepack fifteen on, uh, a piece that stays in town, so if we have another call. We can do a twelve lead or an EKG. NAD doesn't allow us that capability, so still have that. Uh, some other items that we purchased with the new ambulance. Um, new monitor mount, which meets the pull test requirement. New mobile radios for the truck. We used re- reused one mobile radio for the back of the truck. Uh, we're on a portable replacement plan, uh, so these radios cost about forty-five hundred dollars each. They're not to get too technical, but they're tri-band radios, so they deal with UHF, VHF, and eight hundred. Um, so back in the day, we used to have one radio that was UHF, one radio that was VHF. And people would get confused about which one to grab and all that. So th- these are all programmed appropriately to our neighboring communities, um. So the idea, we have seven of them now. We wanna get sixteen of them total, so if we can get three a year over the next three years, it'd be great. So continuing education, we took two of our full-time employees, they're gonna, they're, they finish up their advanced school, they should be getting licensed for their, uh, advanced ENT in the next sixty days. Um. During our onboarding process of any new employee, part-time and full-time, we do an onboarding process of, uh, forty to sixty hours. This is something new that we haven't done here before. Uh, we've instituted this over the last couple of years. Um, before it was like, here's the keys to the kingdom. Now we take them around to all the hospitals. Uh, take them to target, uh, facilities that we go to, nursing care facilities in Kennymore, Bitterford. Places we go to on a regular basis. Uh, we do pumping with them, we do driver training with them, uh, we do our fit tests, we go over SCVAs. All this type of stuff. We have a list of things that we go over, every day is planned out, and, uh, we check the boxes off. Um. We've done numerous certification courses, and we've tried to utilize the Alphonse Workplace Grant. So we get like fifty percent reimbursement for them. So, uh, like, we've had, we've sent people to fire officer one, fire officer two, fire officer three, stuff like that, so we get the fifty percent reimbursement. On brush forty-two, we added a transverse compartment that was taken out of CMP TIF, and just recently we added a backup camera, and that was actually donated by Rundle Auto. Our own guys put it in, um, so. Maintenance of apparatus, forty-four just came back, uh, for, um, a rear pump cracking being replaced. We have a warranty claim out for some paint corrosion. Uh, that's gonna be taken care of. Our older truck, engine forty-six, has had the pump throttle replaced, new alternator, new batteries, and, and a primary rebuild all in the last year. This is an apparatus that we're looking to replace. Um. Main EMS Sustainability Grant, we got approved for fifteen thousand one hundred dollars, looking at buying new stair chair. Pejatik bags, spare splint kits, and, um, new iPads for the apparatus, two new AGs going, um. Fire apparatus and a new scoop stretcher for increased capacity. So capital improvements is over the five-year plan, uh, pumper tanker, we talked about that at last budget meeting, we signed the contract at that point in time. That's due when, in a year from now. Um. It's on track. Radio tower, the station expansion cascade system, that's all kind of wrapped in, into that station expansion. Uh, some fitness equipment right along with that, a service pickup truck. Extraction tools, battery operated, our current extration tools were manufactured in, um, two thousand twelve. Uh, continue to do our gear, turnout gear replacement plan of, uh, four to eight sets per year. Um, in the next couple of years, we gotta start doing our hydrostatic testing of our CVA bottles. Our gear extractor, gear dryer. Um, I spoke to, uh, Dave Lane, and maybe you can shed some light on this, um, Jason. He thought those were older than nineteen ninety-nine.
No, we got those as a grant.
He thought that was prior to the new building.
Ninety-eight, when we got the turnout gear grant?
Yeah, came after that.
Yeah, the new station was ninety-eight.
I wanna say two thousand one, two thousand two. That was a separate grant.
All right, so. They're going on twenty-four years old, if we say two thousand one. Time for replacement, especially with our gear being, the new requirement's gonna be washed twice a year, that type of stuff. Skate bailout kits, um, those would help us if you got trapped on the second floor, be able to bail out of the building, um. So personnel needs moving forward, short-term needs, uh, main purse, I know that's been talked about, okay? Uh, part-time employees, bill it, their, their ability to do, uh, four fifty-seven with no municipal match. Just have them have the ability that if they wanna contribute their own funds, they can absolutely do that. Um, medium-term needs, full-time fire chief, long-term needs, the additional four-time employees. And again, that's a few years out, but I just wanna throw it on people's radar so everybody's kinda. Okay, that's it regarding that.
I have a question.
Six.
I think we, I think we probably already have it, but do we have like a retainment? Um. In other words, if we train in the NT and pay for their education and their training and stuff, they have like a policy where they have to stay for many, like a year.
So mo- most men- uh, other municipalities are doing that, and when it comes down to it. They're not getting the money back from the employee, because the amount that you're gonna invest in lawyer's fees to get it back is not there. Um, we, with our full-time employees, we've created loyalty. So one of the things that I've talked about over the couple of years that I've been in this position is creating a culture. Right? And we've created that culture. We've got pe- part-time employees that have said. That if main purse comes, they're, they will, they would like to work full-time in here. Uh, so we're fully staffed at this point in time because, and I get one to two applications every week right now. People are willing to come to Arundel. Uh, town manager and I have communicated numerous times about education. Um, we're willing to pe- send people to classes. I don't have a whole lot of people that take us up on the classes. Our full-time employees, I wanted to send them to advanced school at least. Um, if they wanna go to paramedic, I'm like, let me know, so we can put it in the budget. Um. But they have, I have one employee that is one full-time employee that's looking at leaving in two years. But that's because he's going to PA school. He's doing all of his prereqs. I've worked with him in Bitterford. He came over here because he wanted a little bit lesser call volume, so he could get some of his prereqs out of the way. He's a great employee. He's what I call a triple threat. He's a paramedic, he's a good firefighter, he's a good apparatus operator. Um, so, like, we've got him for another couple of years. Um, and then we're looking, but there's no talk of anybody else leaving at this point in time.
Cause that used to be a problem, that they would come in.
Yeah, yeah.
To go to another department.
And we're not having that right now.
The thought of the building expansion, I'm sure helps, would keep some of that off.
Right, so we, we've talked, you know, the, the three pillars to keeping an employee is, um, call volume, um, benefits. And, and with that is the wages and all that, and the culture, right? And when you break down culture, you gotta look at what equipment you're providing them, what building you're providing them, and the support mechanism that they have in place in the station. Right? And we've created that. Um, so i- it's, we're, we're on the up and up. So I think we're doing a good job at this point in time. Um, but again. We're getting applications from all over the state, Massachusetts coming here. I know some of them are indeed, some of them were international initially. But, uh, we're doing a good job right now. So we've brought on, I think, nine part-time employees over the last year. We got three more that are gonna be putting through a, uh, onboarding process at the end of the month. Um. We do annual, um. Fitness or medical clearance, uh, screenings, they all go to work well every year. Every employee goes, doesn't matter your age. Um, we, we're bringing on an employee, the, um. The doctor did their medical screening and said, hey, your blood pressure's too high, I want you to do a stress test. So there was some back and forth, and I'm like, this is a job requirement, we'll do the stress test for, we'll pay for it. Just came back today, we cleared. I'm like, all right, good, look, let's go. You know, so, um, he, and he was surprised that we would pay for it. He's like, I got good insurance, I could pay for it, and I'm like, no, this is a job requirement, like, we'll pay for it. He's like, oh, okay, so.
The issue that you bring up is that it was your good one.
Right.
Take it on retaining, you get, oh, we had.
Right.
And the only, the only statute or requirement that was enlarged. Where if you hire a law enforcement officer, if he had a private, we put it through, um.
From our justice.
And then he, before he leaves, he wants to go someplace else, then that other community has to pay a certain percentage back to us. As a result of getting deeply. That statute doesn't extend to fire department, though. I've been an advocate to try to get it installed soon because you can take that away. Yeah. It'd be nice to have.
Uh, did we have something in personnel, then, you'll learn? I don't think so. I was trying to think, it seemed like there was something, but I don't.
There, there is something in personnel, but it's for college credits.
Okay.
There is a college credit caveat in the personnel. I just looked it up the other day, so there was nothing about training that led us up.
I have to look, that may be what you're.
Maybe, that's what maybe I was thinking, but I know for a while we, we had, when it was more volunteer, we had issues with that.
Right.
So. Right now, the operating budget for fire rescue is about five point one percent. So it's just under sixty-seven thousand dollars.
We go over wages. Two parts, I think. Can you help me understand? Under part-time. You know, figure that thirty-one oh five hour, so people work to an hour, officer stipends at seven forty days. And then if you go on to fire department wages. Fire chief, deputy chief. Looks like they're, they have an increase in hourly rate, so. Are they getting an increase in hourly rate in addition to their officer stipends?
So, so what it is, is for any officer, lieutenant, uh, captain, deputy chief. They receive a s- an hourly stipend on top of that. Right? So if they're licensed at the paramedic level, they're receiving that, that new paramedic wage plus the hourly stipend. For the officership. So, so we have one captain, that's full-time captain, um. Captain Holt, uh, he's full-time, so he gets three dollars more an hour. That, that's what the proposal is. Currently, it's two, to go up to three. Uh, because of the increased responsibility.
And then he gets an officer stipend on top of that?
No, that, that's the officer stipend.
My, my only fear was we were double dipping.
No, no, no. So I think that calculation was set aside because when we do, when we do the, the calculation for part-time employees. The outside, so like, the two de- the two, uh, part-time deputy chiefs and the, the part-time captain. Right? We average them at twenty-four hours a week, so we take them at twenty-four hours a week, times seventy-two, and then average out. Um, the three and five dollar proposal, that's where the seven thousand came up, but.
And then my only other fear, Andy, is, and I, I don't wanna. I don't want you to feel like I'm throwing you under the bus, but.
No, it's okay, you've done it before.
Six, I mean, that's a six dollar and nineteen cent increase just for you alone, that's an eighteen percent, that's more than double. Everybody else within the town hall administration, I.
Yep, and.
I'm not saying you're not worth it, but I just, do you think? I mean, in a, from a fairness standpoint, can we break that into like two years, like maybe a?
We, we have broken it into years, you just didn't know about it. So I should have actually received, and I spoke to Keith about this, like, I took a pay decrease last year. Because there was such a significant increase in the overall budget, and I wanted it to go to the employees because. This was when we were seeing a significant trend in the other municipalities increasing their wages. And I wanted that to be, to go towards them and not myself. So instead of taking like a five-dollar pay increase last year, I just took a three.
And then the deputy chiefs are getting a ten percent increase this year.
Uh, no, they're, they're. They're going up, their stipends increasing from three to five, and then they're getting the four percent because they're all paramedics. So all of our off- officer corps is paramedics. All five.
When I laid it up, is it confusing the way I laid it up? If yes, revisit that even better.
No, I just, um, no, I, I, this makes sense to me anyway. No, I just, um, no, I I, this makes sense to me anyway, I just, I don't wanna speak for everybody.
If I have to speak for the chief, I I think you did.
Without a doubt, I'll make that argument all day long to everybody. I just, at town meeting, we have to sit in front of this, of forty people and.
Well, it all depends, is there a hundred gender to let them, like giving a a thirty-day extension to?
I I just, it's just, it's disturbing to look across the board and say, well, then you get to the fire department and it's, oh, that, he's more than double anybody else within. Right, the town salaries, and I just.
So to give you an idea, over from since twenty-three, E M Ts. Uh firefighters a- in the fire department have gone up twenty-one percent. E M T firefighters have gone up twenty-four percent. Um advanced E M Ts have gone up twenty-one percent, paramedics have gone up fifteen. Uh with the, with the addition of uh the stipends. To date, lieutenants have gone up eighteen percent. Uh captain with their paramet- with their paramedic association, uh captains eighteen plus. And then deputy chiefs have gone up um twenty percent.
And to that point, Keith, you said that the market rate is still less than that, right?
Um I think it for me, a little more competitive with our, well, with our neighborhood town.
And I'm transparent with them. Uh I'm like, we're not gonna reach, me, me, Bitterford's pay scale, hands down, right? Because you have to take into account call.
Yeah.
There is like five times, almost six times what we are, right? So like, if you look at what we're being compensated for, it's appropriate for the size of our department. And if you take and you start comparing it to other departments of our size, we're right there. Right? We're not gonna be, we're not gonna be the same pay scale as kind of, right? It it's, it's just not there. We're not doing that call volume. Like if we get to that point where our call volume is two, three thousand calls a year, okay, well, that, we gotta revisit it at that point in time. But we're not there yet.
They have the nursing home center.
Yeah, which we go to a quarter of it. And they're putting in more, like, and and part of that's gonna create, I think that's the next shift, to be perfectly honest. With fire and EMS, is you're gonna see people move from those departments to departments that don't have nursing care facilities. Because it, you get, get called there for list assists on a regular basis. It's the same old call. People want change, they they want to be able to use their skill set besides just lifting a person. Because facility has no lift policy. Even though you pay ten thousand dollars a month to stay there, they have no lift policy. So.
This year, we're um. Uh we need to pay over two hundred thousand, it's huge. So that really uh come up, we can talk about, you know, assisting to. The nursing home, I think they've wanted that too, but the other thing is that, I'm not sure you're reading about it in the paper, that.
So you want that calculation? So just to give you. Just to give you an idea, with Medicare, Medicare reimbursement, we only get reimbursed for about thirty-one percent of what we pay out. Or what we bill out. Um main care is about fifty-one. Private insurance is about sixty-two for us. Uh some of that is, and the reason why you see that increase is uh about eighteen months ago. We were eligible to sign contracts with private insurance companies to get two hundred percent of the Medicare reimbursement rate. So that all the private companies we were able to sign with, so we're seeing a little bit more of that um reimbursement rate. So.
So, are we looking at thirteen oh one? What is in that one point three seven nine million dollars? Is it just salaries?
So in that is, is salaries. No, it it wasn't part of this package. So, so part of that is station upkeep. Some of that station upkeep, apparatus repair, use and subscriptions, which stems anywhere is from our scheduling. And and um N E F R's reporting system, the scheduling software, to um. Asset management, which we've done a significantly good job of doing. Um EMS licensing for the service itself. You have hydrants that we have to run out because it's part of the P U C, main P U C. Which is all the pressurized hydrants in the, in the community, outside of private ones. Like uh the Cape Rundle Preserve, we don't maintain those, that's not under us, that's under them. So vehicle maintenance, tool replacement, repair.
Yeah, so really the biggest thing on all of this is just, you know, the sal- salary. Everything else is pretty much on par with what we've done.
Where then you can handle a lot of the, the budget with some of the grants.
I don't need more paper.
Um the other thing is, is with gear, I put in for another grant for twenty-five particular hoods. We got that from the M A, M M A last year. Another grant that I'm gonna put in for this year. Is uh security key cards access for the building, kind of like what we have here. Um see how much that costs and and do something along those lines. It's a three thousand dollar grant, so we try to. Use these smaller grants, say, they make a difference.
Could we incorporate some of that into the new building?
We can, we can as well, right? So.
We get a lot of our captain's boss, I think we were thinking of, I think we were thinking about the cascades.
Yeah.
Uh cascade, radio tower. I think that was, uh fitness equipment.
Yes.
Uh we're gonna try for a grant for fitness equipment. Right now, we have. Um no, uh I've actually had one business in town say, come to us next December. Because we might need to um excuse some money off our books. Well, in 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 the donation of fitness equipment.
Like production and like a membership discount for you guys, I'm sure that that would be something that they could do.
Yeah, um what is it? Live, live fit over here off um. Yeah, and um he he offered that to us too, but it's, we, we um. We've got a couple of treadmills that were donated by the New Hampshire National Guard, secondary to a connection. Um and uh we've, we bought some mats to put down so people aren't on the floor. Um we bought some kettlebells. So we have, we have about a half a dozen employees that work out. I'm gonna say ninety percent of their shift. Yeah. Well, like staying in town would be.
Yeah.
I'm not saying any names, but you know, staying in town, utilizing those resources would be easy. Um so.
Oh yeah, I just, I'm thinking, you know, putting my fitness hat on.
Yeah.
Rather than buying fitness equipment, which is a liberal line there, would it be more of a benefit to say like, give them bonuses based on how many times they attend gym, based on their.
Sure, we can do, we can do whatever there's support for. Um I know that in, in.
I mean, there're gonna be more useful classes of employees there.
Right, where where I work full-time, I work out on a regular basis right there at the station. While I'm doing, and I think.
I think a while back, we had looked at, before you came, that we had looked into like doing that for all of the employees. For the town, as far as getting a reduced membership.
Yeah.
To a gym or something. I don't think it worked out.
But if it's here and down, and a little bit is willing to give you an option, I would, I mean, I'm. I love us, it's where I work, but Chris is awesome and you know, I think you're a real straight. And I will pretend I would down to do it.
And uh like I've put out there for, since the harbor run or um heritage run. For the conservation, um we're, we're actually gonna sponsor any one of our employees to go this time here.
Yeah.
So I've had three or four people already show interest, uh I might even extend it to their spouses and do it as a family thing.
Totally, that's, it's definitely very young, right?
Yeah, yeah, so uh just as, hey, we're here, like, limited costs. You you know, and it goes to the community, so it's one of those things.
Yeah, yeah.
Um like all our bottles and uh cans go to the heritage. Uh we just grab all the plank bags from here, they must be wondering why they they empty out on a regular basis. We just grab the whole thing, bring them back to the station, and then ship them, because they're already pre-staked, right? So we're just like, send it. So, you know, we, we try a little bit to give back as much, so.
Anything else?
I I uh sent it to him to review the o- the other day, so.
And I always curious about the call volume over the years, so I can do that.
Yeah, it it's increasing on a regular basis. Well, I I can give you, we are about a sixty-five thirty split. We're an anomaly in emergency services, and I think most of it is due to our mutual aid. Um we're. Right, uh because we're on personal alarm assignments for a huge area. So um it was just discovered that recently, um we're on the first alarm assignment, everything north of one oh nine. From Wells, Kenny Bonk, uh all the way to Bitterford.
Yeah.
So, and Kenny Bonkport doesn't have run cards, and then as far west to Lyman. On the first alarm assignment. So the anomaly for us is most nine-one-one services in the state of Maine are an eighty-twenty split. Eighty percent EMS, twenty percent fire. We're a sixty-five thirty-five split. So I think that's some of a little bit of a draw too, because people know that they're gonna do more than just EMS calls all the time, um so.
One here.
Always.
Okay, there'll be.
If you name me on the ninth, I'm not gonna be in.
Yeah.
Anybody else have anything to add? Anyway, Dan.
Right, so some of that is um. Through the communal paramedicine program, and we'd have to become licensed to do that. Um and which I'm not opposed in doing, I I don't think that we have a um. Over some different, or or a request for it. I'm not saying the need isn't there. But it isn't like we're gonna have a hundred people do it, right? There'd be a few people, right? Yeah. Well, sometimes it's like, if we don't, if we go to someone pretty frequently and also like we don't.
What, what, what are we gonna discuss at the next meeting?
Uh we're gonna do recreation.
Yep.
I'm gonna give you the full spread out of the budget. Um Shell's asked for me to send out the paperwork on lieutenant road plans, so you can take a better look at that.
Yep.
I'll come to you that night. And then after that, if you may be able to go through some of these budgets that you've already seen and sign off on them. We'd like.
So we can, so far, we've done. Eleven oh one, eleven oh two, eleven oh three, eleven oh four. Is that correct?
Yep, purrs and. You wanna have the purrs discussion, you wanna have the help chat discussion.
Yep.
To approve any of those yet then.
No, I know, I know, I, we've just gone through.
We've gone through them.
Yeah, we've gone through, we haven't done any motions at all, approved anything, so. I know in the past, we've kind of gone through and done like a preliminary motion, but.
We never do that.
Whatever you want, you're in the chair.
Um anybody have anything else they wanna add, if you like?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. All the bigger. Alright, thanks guys.
So what happens, we go to fire on a regular, what we call a, there's someone that's in that city. And we don't go in a little bit, we we go and check on them. So I, we go and knock on the door and like, hey, now, I'm okay, like, I'm good, because one situation.